All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome, I'm sorry we're running a little late. But we are here, it is Wednesday, April sixteenth, seven thirty-six, and I'll call to order the Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting. Welcome to everybody here in the hall as well as on Zoom. And we're going to start off as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. All right, seeing none, I'll move for acceptance. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Item number six, acceptance of the Executive Summary Financial Report for the month of February twenty twenty-five. Comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll move for acceptance. All those in favor say aye. Item number seven, acceptance of the Accounts Paid Report for the month of February twenty twenty-five. Comments or questions there? All right, seeing none, I'll move for acceptance. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Onto item number eight, the Public Works Committee met on April second. Commissioner Ziegmanfeld, please tell us what happened.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee did meet, and we have a number of items to review. Item eight A, adoption of an ordinance, amending Chapter two ninety, Tucany, Tacony, Frankfurt, Watershed, Stormwater Management Ordinance. Article eight, prohibitions to comply with regulatory requirements as implemented through the township's municipal separate storm sewer system. The MS four permit for stormwater discharges under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, the NPDES program. There is an attachment, and I know that there was some discussion about it in the Public Works Session. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? See none? I don't think we need to have staff weigh in, so I'll move for the adoption of this ordinance to comply with the MS four and NPDES program.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Manager Elliott, do we have an ordinance number?
Yes, it is ordinance number two, two four eight five dash twenty-five. Commissioner Armin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Item eight B, adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter two ninety-one, Whisahican Creek Watershed Stormwater Management Ordinance. Article eight, prohibitions to comply with regulatory requirements as implemented through the township's MS four permit for stormwater discharges under the NPDES program. And again, this is an extension to the Whisahican Creek Watershed. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? I see none, Mr. President, and so I'll move for adoption of this ordinance as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Manager Elliott, do you have an ordinance number for this item?
Yes, this is ordinance two four eight six dash twenty-five. Commissioner Armin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Aye.
Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Item eight C, adoption of a resolution granting conditional approval and associated waivers for CTDA number twenty-five dash zero for a minor lot consolidation at seven forty-two Sunset Road for two adjacent parcels under the same ownership into one lot without any site improvements. The parcels are comprised of a single-family detached dwelling with the driveway access from the vacant lot. There is a revision that is attached. Do we need any comment on this from our solicitor?
No, I don't believe so, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. The resolution is attached in the packets, and this is just a simple lot consolidation.
Any questions or comments from members of the board? I see none on this one, it's not an ordinance, so I will move for adoption of the resolution.
Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item eight D, award of a contract to Armour &amp; Sons Electric, Inc., in the amount of six hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars for traffic signal improvements along the Old York Road corridor. I know this is an important addition for things that we want to continue to do to manage traffic and to keep things moving properly. Any questions or comments from members of the board? I see none, Mr. President. Any need for staff to weigh in on this? I don't believe so. So I will move for the award of this contract to Armour &amp; Sons in that amount.
Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last item, item eighty, adoption of a resolution authorizing staff to submit a grant under the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Developments. That's D C E D, PA Small Water and Sewer Program, in the amount of four hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred ten dollars and sixty-six cents, and committing to cover the remaining costs of the projects to replace the collapsed stormpipe on Valley Road. Any questions or comments on this one as well? I see none, Mr. President, for our move for the adoption of this resolution for the D C E D to submit a grant for that in the amount of four hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred ten dollars and sixty-six cents, as well as our commitment to cover any additional costs.
All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, the business of the Public Works Committee commenced, and so I will move for adoption of the minutes of the April second, twenty twenty-five meeting of Public Works.
All those in favor of adoption of the Public Works Committee meeting minutes say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Onto item number nine, the Building and Zoning Committee also met on April second. The committee has no business to bring before the board, so I will move for approval of the meeting minutes from April second, twenty twenty-five. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Onto item number ten, Public Safety Committee met on April ninth. Commissioner Brockington, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. Yes, we have several items to vote on tonight from our meeting on April ninth. All right, we're going to move forward for the items that were discussed on April ninth. Item A, authorized advertisement of an ordinance amending Chapter two eighty-five Vehicle and Traffic, Section two eighty-five dash forty-three, Street and Parking Regulations of Sheltonham Township Code to amend the traffic regulations to remove a handicap parking in front of three two four Beecher Avenue in Sheltonham, Pennsylvania. Mr. President, I shall move.
Any comments or questions on advertising this ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're going to move on to item B, authorize the advertiser of an ordinance amending Chapter two eighty-five Vehicle and Traffic, Section two eighty-five dash forty-three, Street and Parking Regulation of Sheltonham Township Code to amend the traffic regulation to remove a handicap parking in front of fourteen fifty Willow Avenue in Elkins Park. Mr. President, I shall move.
Comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item C, authorize advertisement of an ordinance amending Chapter two eighty-five Vehicle and Traffic, Section two eighty-five dash forty-three, Street and Parking Regulation of Sheltonham Township Code to amend the traffic regulation to add a three-way stop sign and applicable pavement markings and signage at the intersection of Glen Side Avenue and South Avenue in Winco. And many of us know that's already been done. I want to thank Bo and his team for getting that done. And Chief, I want to thank your staff for all that they did for getting that done also. Commissioner Rappaport, keep pushing and keep pushing the stone. That's all I would say to you. Thank you, Mr. President, I shall move.
Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item D, authorize the additional traffic calming measures to include two sets of speed cushions, applicable pavement markings and signage on the two hundred block of Barker Road in Winco at the Township Traffic Calming Program. Mr. President, I shall move.
Any comments or questions on this item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item E, approval of an Amazon purchase in the amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for thirty-three U B key for the two factors security keys to be purchased from Assets Forfeiture Funds. Mr. President, I shall move.
Any comments or questions? We had some discussion about this, and Chief explained at the Public Safety Meeting what this was about. Any additional comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item F, approval of the installation of graphics for the crime scene truck from Traditional Sign Company in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, and this is being funded through police donations. Mr. President, I shall move.
Any comments or questions? I think Commissioner Rappaport at the Public Safety Meeting asked about information from Finance about that allocation. I think that may have come through. So, great question, and thank you to Finance for getting that information for us. So with that, any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And last item tonight is approval of the uplifting of the crime scene truck by Havas in the amount of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. This also will be funded through police donations. Mr. President, I shall move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Last item then would be our calling for the approval of our minutes from the meeting which was held April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockington. I understand there may be some modifications to the minutes. I'll.
Yes.
Open it, Commissioner Rappaport, yeah.
Yeah, thanks very much, yeah. There was a line about the chases that Philadelphia does. I did not say that Philadelphia led chase, that that was actually a poor practice that was published. They do not authorize that, so let's just remove that mistake from the minutes, please. I was asking really what we do, because I know we don't chase, and that's not an acceptable practice. So just clarifying, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. So with that modification, any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of adoption of the Public Safety Committee meeting with Commissioner Rappaport's modification say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockington. Item number eleven, Public Affairs also met on April ninth. Commissioner Rappaport.
We did, thank you, Mr. President. Among other business, we have a couple of items to vote on this evening. On behalf of the Public Affairs Committee, I'll move the award of a contract to Goat House Creamery for the pool concessions at Conklin and Glen Side Pools.
Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. We're all really excited about this contract and the bid and having a local place, Goat House Creamery, be the successful bidder here and serve the pools and recreation area, so it's really exciting. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor awarding the contract to Goat House Creamery say aye.
Aye.
And eleven B, I move approval of the appointment of Jallo Sulaiman of Elkins Park to be a voting member of the Economic Development Task Force.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the appointment say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And unless there's any comments about the minutes, I'll move the acceptance of the minutes of the Public Affairs Committee from April ninth.
Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. Item number twelve, the Finance Committee also met on April ninth. Commissioner Norris, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And while the lack of items that need our attention tonight is no indication of the work that's being done by our Director of Fiscal Affairs, she and the team are doing a fine job and working hard on a lot of items, but no items need our attention this evening, other than other than accepting the meeting minutes from April ninth, which is when the Finance Committee met. So I move the acceptance of the regular meeting minutes dated April ninth.
Thank you, Commissioner Norris, well done. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number thirteen, old business. Does, do any of the commissioners have old business for tonight's board meeting? Commissioner Cherico and then Commissioner Brockington.
Thanks, Commissioner. I want to speak tonight about the proposed redevelopment of the Melrose Country Club. And although this project isn't on our agenda this evening, some land development plans have been submitted to the township, have been discussed by the Planning Commission, reviewed by our staff, and evaluated by the Montgomery County Planning Commission. My concern is this, the developers seem to be prioritizing cars over people. They're requesting waivers to narrow both sidewalks and trails while asking to widen driveways at townhomes to create concrete front yards. The County Planning Commission flagged this in their review. There's a twenty-page letter that's available on our website. The proposed six-foot, excuse me, the proposed six-foot wide trails fall well short of the ten-foot circuit trail standard. And let's be clear, six feet is a sidewalk, maybe a glorified sidewalk. It is not a trail. A true ten-foot trail would allow accessibility for all users, walkers, cyclists, kids going to school, and people with disabilities, and would also open the doors to future funding for trail expansion along Tucany Creek. With a hundred fifteen acres to work with, there is no excuse, in my opinion, to get, not to get this right. The developers are also asking to reduce sidewalks to four feet in some places rather than the required five. And then they want driveways to exceed fourteen feet in width. In the letter the Planning Commission sent us, they warned that this will create wide swaths of pavement with no trees, no landscaping, or the kind of community feel that people actually want. The county suggests a smarter alternative, move garages and driveways to the rear of the homes via alleys. That simple change would create more attractive streetscapes, shade, and a safer experience for pedestrians. When the developer first came to us about these plans last year, they were proud of all the trails and the open space they were going to provide. I sincerely hope that the developer takes the feedback from the county and hopefully from our staff seriously and makes meaningful changes to that plan. But tonight, I want to be clear with my fellow commissioners, when a land development plan does come before us, we must reject any proposal that limits pedestrian accessibility to make more room for more cars. We have the responsibility and the opportunity to demand better, and I will ask us all to do that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Cherico. Of course, that item is not before us, but I'm sure it will at some point, and certainly will give it due consideration. Commissioner Brockington.
Yes, over the weekend on Saturday, I had the opportunity to visit with our police chief during the testing over at Cedar Brook. And I just wanted to say to the chief that your staff did an outstanding job, the way you guys run that event, from push-ups and sit-ups to the running and then the testing. I wanted to have Commissioner Ziegmanfeld over there doing the push-up portion, but he decided not to show up, but that's okay. But I just wanted to say, Chief, in all seriousness, that your staff was really well-prepared. It didn't seem like a lot of the candidates were well-prepared, but your staff, your staff was well-prepared. So I just wanted to say thank you for what you guys do in trying to get us some good candidates.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Brockington, give me thirty.
Sir, thank you very much for attending. It's, I think it's great for our officers to see the Board of Commissioners support for their police department. I say it, but it's really nice when they see that. We're working hard, as you know, to attract good candidates for our department here. It's an ongoing process, and we bring some new candidates forward hopefully during this process, and hopefully we'll see them in the Board of Commissioners meetings shortly.
Hey, Chief, for the record, how many, how many signed up to take the test?
We had just under three hundred sign up.
And how many showed up?
Unfortunately, we, the weather didn't cooperate as well, and that kind of hurt us as well. We had about seventy-eight people show up.
Okay. And out of that seventy-eight, how many got to go to take the test?
I believe the final number for the written exam was forty-seven. Put this in contrast to when I started my career, I know it was many months ago, but I was in a room with two thousand people taking a test, so it's a challenge, recruitment, retention, these are all issues that are facing every law enforcement agency across the country right now that are dealing with the same issue. So, as you know, some of the efforts we've gone to, we're going to continue to try new things to try to draw and entice candidates to join our department here. But I appreciate everyone's help with that. You know, I call upon everyone when the time comes for the test, and everybody does step up and do their part. So we'll continue to do that and look for other opportunities to try to expand the pool moving forwards.
Do you plan on testing again anytime soon?
Well, we're going to certify the current list we have, we're going to begin, you know, the interview process on that list to get that list certified with civil service. Once that list is completed, I imagine we'll be looking to do testing again this year, in twenty-five, so.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you, Chief, thank you, Commissioner Brockington. Commissioner Rappaport has some old business.
Yeah, and thank you. There is a lot of old business, and that sort of is a testimony to how busy everybody is and how much we're trying to get done. But I have quite a few of these. The first one is, I know, and this sort of dovetails on something that Commissioner Cherico was talking about. I know that when it comes to Saldau, we keep talking about the, there's an inconsistency in there. I went back and took another look at where it is. Excuse me, I think there's a chart that is the problem, because all the narratives are consistent about the three-inch circumference. I'm sorry, no, the three-inch as opposed to the six-inch. So that needs to be redone. And I know sometimes we like to wait and pile on things so that we can get it all done at once. But I think the urgency of getting that right, so that the waivers are not compromised as they've been in the last couple of large developments. I think we need to get this right, so I'm urging us to move forward with that amendment, or whatever, the corrective amendment, okay? So that's one thing. I'm just going to repeat that there's a lot of pressure from the public and from a committee and from the circumstances in our environment to get another look at our HRC legislation, our ordinance, and figure out how we're going to proceed with our Human Relations Commission, if at all. And if the problem is with the ordinance, then let's get the ordinance revised properly, so we can really move to make sure that our human rights are being protected right now, especially. Another piece of old business, the Luke Oil on Glen Side Avenue still has no plantings in those cement containers. It continues to look blighted, and that needs to be fixed. There are a few others. The convenience store ordinance, I'd love to get that looked at. Though essentially, the concerns about enforcing, and we've talked about this with communities that care, with the police, there's so much non-compliance by selling vaping materials to underage kids. Some of, some of those folks who were not in compliance also had no interest in being trained to compliance, and so that needs a real hard look. And there is some interest, especially Commissioner Cherico and I have been talking about the Robinson Project, and I know it's slowed down because we tabled it because of certain questions. We want to make sure, though, that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. So, that does it. But again, I, no insults or concerns, I know we're all very busy, just don't want them to fall through the cracks. Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on the Luke Oil matter, that should be resolved very shortly. There was a landscaping plan that was submitted, there was some feedback from the township that was shared back with them, and they're in the process of revising, so that is actively in progress, and I would suspect within the next couple of weeks, we should see some sort of progress there.
Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. Any other old business? All right, moving on to new business. We have one agenda item on, under new business. Item fourteen A, consider recommending the Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of new training targets for the police department in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars to TA targets using asset forfeiture funds. There is an attachment, Chief. I assume that because everybody gets it all in the same spot, right in the center of the bullseye, you could recycle these things, right? But why don't you tell us a little bit about it?
This is, this is part of our training, ongoing training for our department. This is something that came up through our instructors that thinks will be beneficial to our officers in firearms training as well. So it's equipment targets and some other stuff in this estimate here. This cost will be taken from our asset forfeiture funding for this. I think this will be something that will benefit in our training, and I like the fact that it came up from our instructors and feel this would be a good tool for us to acquire.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll move for approval of the purchase. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any other? Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Norris.
Chief, just curious, where does the training take place?
At our range, this would be our township range.
The township, yes, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Norris. Any other new business for tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting? All right, seeing none, we'll close new business, and we'll move on to Citizens Forum. We're going to start here in the hall. Sir, come on up, identify yourself, and you'll have three minutes, and then I will call on folks after we finish in the hall here, I'll go on Zoom. So, sir, please state your name, the area of the township where you live, and you'll have three minutes. Mr. Siegel, just hang on one second, we'll restart your clock, but we want to make sure we could hear you on the mic.
Got it. Thanks. Alan Siegel, Elkins Park.
The last meeting I attended two months ago, I invited everybody to look at the nature reserve. Judging by everybody's expressions, nobody took me up. But when I spoke to the fire marshal after the meeting, he said, isn't there a gully back there? Then it registered to me. That's a natural fire pit, lock loaded and ready to go. So my question tonight is, who is responsible? God forbid something happens now that you're aware of it.
Although we have an answer for you, sir, so continue if you have additional comments.
The other issue is, it's been about five years since we've had a parking authority in the township. I want to know why it's taking so long to have one.
What, I'm sorry?
Parking authority. Somebody goes around writing tickets.
Yeah, we have, Chief, we have, we have someone who writes tickets for parking.
That is correct. We're also looking to expand that currently as well. Job postings will be coming out on our website for those positions. It's a multifaceted position that includes parking enforcement, so I'm sure you'll be happy with that as well.
Yeah, because we're leaving too much money on the table. And it's and it's several places in the township.
All right, thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, come on up. Please state your name, the area of the township where you're from, and you'll have three minutes. Nice to see you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kristen Smith, and I live in Glen Side. Okay, good evening, Commissioners, Township Commissioners, Township Manager Elliot, and all other guests. My name is Kristen Smith, and I am honored to stand before you tonight as the president of Cheltenham Sports, a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing low-cost, high-quality athletic opportunities for the youth of our community since nineteen thirty-two. But beyond that title, I am deeply rooted in the Cheltenham community. I have been a resident of the township since I was four, and I'm a proud K through twelve graduate of the Cheltenham School District, as are my two sisters. My twelve-year-old twins are current students at Elkins Park School. My husband is both an educator at Cedar Brook Middle School and an assistant coach for the Cheltenham High School basketball team. And my father, Erv Brockington, not only a coach of Cedar Brook's seventh grade baseball team, also proudly serves as a Cheltenham Township Commissioner. Cheltenham is not just where I live, it is home. Now, a little bit about Cheltenham Sports. Our club currently offers programs in soccer, basketball, wrestling, roller hockey, and our newly formed cheerleading team, the Cheltenham Dollys, which I personally coach. Soccer, though, is by far our largest and most popular program with a little under one thousand registrations in two thousand twenty-four. Our ability to offer our soccer program at a low cost, at a lower cost than other nearby community programs is only possible because of the township's continued partnership and allowing us to access its fields. For that, we are incredibly grateful. Now more than ever, access to low-cost extracurricular activities is critical. Through sports, we teach teamwork, discipline, and leadership, helping our kids develop skills that go far beyond the game. Cheltenham Sports also plays a vital role as a feeder program, preparing young athletes to transition into middle and high school sports with a solid foundation. By providing training and development opportunities right here in our community, we ensure that families do not have to look outside of Cheltenham for quality sports programs. Our young athletes can grow, compete, and thrive close to home, strengthening not only their athletic abilities, but also their connection to the community and to their future school teams. As we look ahead, we kindly ask the township to consider partnering with us to keep allowing us access to these fields and to help us keep our fields safe, healthy, and beautified, not only for the benefit of our club, but for the entire Cheltenham community. Maintaining these spaces is essential for us to continue offering quality programming that meets the needs of our youth and reflects the pride we all share in our township. With your continued support, we can ensure that our fields remain vibrant, a vibrant welcoming place where young athletes can train, families can gather, and all residents can enjoy the benefits of well kept, well-kept public space. My goal tonight is simple, to introduce myself, reaffirm our commitment to partnering with the township, and ask that you continue to work with us to ensure Cheltenham's young athletes have access to the resources they need to grow, compete, and succeed. We deeply value the relationship that we've built with you and look forward to continuing our work together to keep sports accessible and thriving in our community. Thank you for your time and all you do to support our community. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I think I speak for everybody on the board when I say we appreciate not only your family's legacy of service here in Cheltenham Township, but also the exquisite relationship that we have with Cheltenham Sports. We are supportive of the organization and want to continue to support it, and we all have a meeting coming up to talk about that relationship and how to continue to move it forward. So I I think I speak again on behalf of the board when we say thank you, and we look forward to continuing our partnership in the future.
Yep, thank you. And I have some annual reports that I'll leave for you all.
That would be great. If you leave them with Ms. Elliot, that would be fantastic. Thank you. All right. Anyone else here in the hall for Citizens Forum?
I would, I would say that she would make our parents pretty proud.
There you go. That's right. The, we're going to move to, we're going to move to Zoom. Ms. Catchmar, you're you're first in line there, so please unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes, please.
Hello, and thank you so much, Daria Catchmar, thirty years in Cheltenham. Jeff Cherico is my representative. I want to thank you so much for entertaining a different topic than I've come before you with before. Commissioner Lewis and I have been doing a lot of trash talk in the past few weeks. And I know that there is a concerted effort in order to try to beautify the township and allow and opportunities for ownership across all of Cheltenham to beautify some of the blighted areas that we have. And I understand that that Commissioner Lewis is going to be working with various representatives. And I don't, what I want to bring to your attention this evening is something that was incredibly distressing to me and something that I don't believe that Commissioner Lewis was brought up to speed on in a timely fashion. But apparently Shopper's Lane, we know, is a problem when it comes to trash and detrius. However, the Cheltenham Township Police were called in to rescue six caged, neglected dogs this weekend on Shopper's Lane. This is much more than a trash issue. And so I would come to you this evening saying that I support Commissioner Lewis in his efforts to improve the blighted areas, but also to make sure that we are very aware that there is some policing of areas that dumping of animals might occur. So that that's it. This is a humane society issue at this point. So yes, it it's trash, but these are living beings, and we need to make sure that we are taking care of not just the paper, but the the living beings. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments. In the first respect, I know that to use your phrase, there has been some trash talk the last couple of board meetings. And I know Commissioner Lewis has expressed a keen interest in addressing that issue, and it has sort of asked staff to come up with strategies to deal with that, and certainly that is in progress. The second item that you raised with respect to the dumping of the of the animals, I, again, I think we all agree it is a a terrible and disgusting event to have occurred, and I I'm going to turn it over to our chief to talk a little bit about what Cheltenham has done in terms of investigation and that sort of thing. But but I think we all share the 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 horror of with you of that of that type of situation and assure you that it is being handled by our police department. Chief?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just wanted to comment on this. We put a press release out today to the local media, and it's on our Facebook postings as well, to let the public know about this. We're looking for public assistance with any information on this. This is an active investigation with Cheltenham detectives, representatives from Montgomery County SPCA, the Humane Society, the Pennsylvania Dog Warden. This is a horrendous act. I don't know how somebody could could walk away, just leave them there like that. But the dogs weren't cared for immediately. We got them up, got them, they were in bad shape, I thought, as far as physical shape goes. So we went and got them to care they need it right away. They're at Montgomery County SPCA right now, being tended to. I'm sure there's going to be a push for adoption out there. If anyone's interested in that, they can reach directly out to the Montgomery County SPCA for for that information as well. This is an ongoing investigation, as as I mentioned, and we'll be investigating who's responsible for this.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Appreciate that. And hopefully the perpetrators are, yeah, one second. Hopefully, the perpetrators are captured, but I do want to just emphasize one thing that the chief said, which is that these animals, if you saw the press release, they're pretty cute despite their condition that they were dropped off in, and and they are available for adoption. So please, you know, check out the SPCA if you're gonna, if you're looking for an animal.
Yeah, Chief, maybe we can connect with the SPCA and turn this around to a positive and try to see if we can get those animals adopted here, back here in Cheltenham. I think it would really be great if they can maybe discount the price if someone lives here in Cheltenham and with those particular puppies. Not at my house, I already have two. But if, you know, maybe, maybe my daughter, you only have one. But, you know, maybe we can get the SPCA to run some type of Cheltenham dog special for those particular puppies.
As I said, we've been in touch with them. There is a lot of interest already on that front for the adoption end of it as well. As I said, if anybody has any interest in that, please reach out to them, and, you know, you can put your name in for that.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Commissioner Brockington. Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Brock.
I'm sorry. So a couple of questions. We'll start with Commissioner Lewis and then Commissioner Cherico.
Yeah, this is a sad story I'm just learning of. A quick question. Chief, has mall management been notified of this incident directly?
I believe they were made aware that day we were out there. I can follow up with that for you if you'd like.
Yeah, I I would like to meet with mall management to see about, you know, I don't know how much lighting is out there on Shopper's Lane, but maybe increased signage, lighting, maybe even surveillance. We can't do too much.
Can't.
Okay, my apologies. Yeah, so yeah, maybe we need to meet with mall management to to see if we can get adequate lighting out there, assuming it's not there now. Increase signage and maybe even surveillance. Because first and foremost, we have to deal with the incident that occurred, but we ought to be thinking about what can we do to eliminate and or minimize our susceptibility to a recurrence.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. Commissioner Cherico?
I might take a different look at that. I'm almost glad that they dropped them off there as opposed to throwing them in a ditch that no one would ever see them, you know. So I mean, to to that end, I'm glad that it was a place that where people can actually see, see the dogs and report them. Was this during the daytime or was it at night?
This was at nine thirty in the morning we recovered them.
So I mean, from the, from that perspective, I'm I'm sort of glad that that's where they dropped them because there's a lot of traffic in that place at that time of day. I think my my concern moving forward is a concern I raised a few months ago in light of the Philadelphia Inquirer of the, about the SPCA in Conshohocken, leading to the closure in Abington as well. And so while I'm thrilled that dogs are now in a warm place and being fed, I do still have concerns about whether those dogs that are in the in the control of the SPCA are properly being handled because the reports that we've received or that we read last year indicate that they they were not. I know there's been a change in in some management there. I think we talked before about figuring out what happens to the dogs that we bring there to see how many of them are actually put down and how many of them are actually adopted out. Do we have any sense of of where we stand on that?
Unfortunately, sir, I don't have an answer for you for that, but I can get you an answer on that.
Yeah, I mean, I I until I have a complete confidence that the SPCA is handling these animals the way they they should be, they have sixty-seven million dollars sitting in their coffers, and they're really tight with the purse strings. I'm 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 very hesitant to, you know, have us send any pets their way without, you know, following up and ensuring that those pets are properly vetted and make sure that they're actually going to homes and not just being put down like they had been unnecessarily. I mean, we know Abington's closed because of unhealthy conditions, I believe. And it's a shame that that's still the case, but I hope that can change, and I think that we should be on alert to make sure that our, that any pets we bring there are properly treated.
Hey, Chief, I'm going to go on on the record and go on on the limit. Everyone knows here that I foster puppies from time to time. Is this something I do? I'm going to reach out to you, and I'm going to reach out to the SPCA to see if I can foster one of those puppies until we find an adopted home.
We have a lot of interest amongst staff as well, so.
I think each, I think each commissioner should actually foster a puppy.
Good. We're not going to take a vote on that.
All in favor.
Okay, that's 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 a throwdown challenge right there.
Obstand.
Uh, okay.
We need a reservation number.
Commissioner Cherico, all kidding aside, really good points. And to that end, you know, folks who, folks who find themselves, I don't know if this is the case in in this particular situation, but folks who find themselves in a circumstance where they can't care for their pet or or a litter of pets, there are places where you can go to bring them where they'll be safe and warm and fed and leaving them on the side of the road, even in a high-traffic area where you're sure they're going to get picked up, is really not the best way to deal with it. So hopefully, anyone who finds themselves in that situation will do the right thing and take them to an appropriate shelter that they are comfortable with, that the that the animals be taken care of. Okay. Moving on, I see Ms. Melton is next, and then Ms. Stein.
Good evening, everyone. I'll make this really, really quick. One, Jeff and Ann, thank you for your concern about the blight, and also the other commissioners, because I'm understanding now it's all over the township. But it seems like it's closer to the Philadelphia borderline. Unfortunately, I had to bother Ann today. Not you, Jeff, because I haven't been on your side yet. And I really feel sorry for the owners, the business owners. I was at one of your meetings where finding them, you know, might not even solve the problem because they have to pay for it, but people are dropping off mattresses, trash bags, everything. And from my window, I'm thinking that the dumpsters are being empty because I hear the trucks and looking, they're not. So I'm just bringing that to your attention. The other thing, and I'll make this very, very brief. Again, if most people know that I'm Darnine Melton, I live in Lamont Historical District, Vice Chair of the Bahar, and also a member of the Historical Commission. So I'm, and I don't usually do anything without telling upfront what I do. So at the last historical meeting, I did make a comment that at the next Bahar meeting, I will bring up a subject where there was an incident here in Lamont. We're supposed to try to protect, as Jeff says, how our community looks, how it feels. People move here because of how it looks and how it feels and how we are. And the responsibility of even the Advisory Board is to protect. So in just a glance, it seems as if, and this piggybacks on what Ann says, that one thing might read one way and another thing might read another, and therefore I will be talking to the Bahar about this in a little bit more depth to see if maybe that's what's happening. My glance is that I think that we are applying some rules and regulations to the Historical District, which which in itself is a little different than just Cheltenham. But again, I wanted just the commissioners to know that that's, um, what I seen and where I'm kind of going. Um, I did find the paperwork about the water tower and the judge did keep, um, jurisdiction of that. However, um, I still have it. I haven't contacted him because again, there was activity going down there, but we'll talk about that later. And thank you, um, Police Chief, for the extra patrols, because I have noticed they're sitting at the border knot here. Um, so thank you. And the Fire Department for coming on so quickly for that crash that ended up, looked like it was a car fire, so.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. All right. Thank you. And thank you for all you do. Um, okay.
No problem. I, I, I told, I forgot who I told, but I told them I'm gonna watch John Russell park like an eagle watches a rat. Okay?
Thank you, Dar- Darlene Eagle Eye Melton. Thank you. Uh, all right, Ms. Stein.
Um, Emily Stein, Winco. I just wanted to say that if everyone is not aware, in the, uh, within the last two weeks, Philadelphia hasn't announced, announced a big new initiative to stop dumping. So this may cause an increase across the line in Cheltenham um, because of their increased aggressive efforts to try to stop dumping, uh, in Philadelphia. So it, maybe that has something to do with the incident this week and maybe not, but we may see an uptick. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Any other, uh, Citizens Forum for this evening? All right, we're going to close Citizens Forum and I will move for a German. It is 8:27 PM.
Wow.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.